The United States of America, and the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item C, public comment. At this time, the mayor will recognize members of the public who have indicated their desire to address the council. On recognition by the mayor, persons may address the council first stating their name and address. Council may take action on emergency matters introduced by members of the public. Anyone from the public wish to address the council? Seeing no one, we'll go on to item D. Approval approval of the minutes of the June twenty-three, twenty-twenty common council meeting. Motion by Mr. Preschel, second by Mr. Bargander, any discussion? Seeing no discussion, please vote. Thank you very much. Boy, it really goes so much faster. Item E, staff updates. Introduction of the new firefighters presented by Scott Owen, Fire Chief.
Good evening, everyone. Pleased to announce our two new firefighters. Nathan Sager joined us on April twentieth, twenty-twenty. He started with us as a firefighter EMT with all the COVID stuff. His paramedic class was delayed. Recently, he became a state licensed paramedic, so he's a full bore medic now. He was a teacher in his previous life. He was with Colby and kind of fell into firefighter, paramedic. Lives here in Marshfield, and we're very happy to have him on board. And then is next to Nathan is Justin Hanson. Justin started with us June first. He comes to us from the east side of the state. He had worked with Rip and Garden Guardian ambulance as a paramedic. He had also been with Sheboygan Fire for a period of time. Came over here and we're very pleased to have both of them on board. And I'd invite them to speak if they want to. They probably won't. But Nathan and Justin. And I'll back out to the ring.
All right. Item F, mayor's comments and play recognition. Julie Lou Martnek with the police department, July fifth, two thousand and fifteen, five years. Zachary Miller with the fire department, July twentieth, two thousand and fifteen, five years, and Aaron Wargowski with the police department, July twenty-six, two thousand and five, fifteen years. Also, just so the council is aware, there'll be no closed session tonight. And we're going to move item up, item T up to just after the consent agenda. That's it for my comments. Item G, any council comments? Comments of the council? Seeing none, we'll go to item H, reports from commissions, boards, and committees? Any reports from commissions, boards, or committees? Seeing none, we'll go to item H, the consent agenda. Is there a motion to receive and place on file? Approving approving all recommended actions in the consent agenda. Motion by Mr. Fire, second by Mr. Preschel, any discussion? Seeing no discussion, please vote. Thank you. That motion carries ten to zero. We're going to move up item T to the next spot. So an administrative hearing regarding the denial of a food and liquor license to Black Kirtana, Alejandra Hernandez on the grounds of unpaid real estate taxes. So if you all want to come up to the podium there. So, Alejandre, it's it's my understanding that you've signed the agreement to postpone a formal hearing for taking evidence at tonight's meeting. I have that written agreement to that effect here tonight, and I will place it on a file. I just want to confirm that that is your desire. The common council will take up the consideration of whether it may grant conditional licensing pursuant to nine dash oh two sixteen C of the city code at this time without formal testimony. Is there anything that you wish to state for consideration for the council at this time?
Your honor, she just wants to know if she's gonna be able to get out her license after you show.
Can you say that into the mic just to, that's okay, just so we can hear you?
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. She just wants to know if she can get her license after, you know, you speak with Ms. Shelby.
So that's what that's what the council will be discussing tonight?
Okay.
All right. Thank you, and thank you very much for interpreting. Shelby, did you have anything that you wanted to present to the council?
Yes, I have something I would like to present to the council. I just want, it'll take probably about two or three minutes. In the winter of two thousand and eighteen, mysteriously at my store, the breaker was turned off. And I had to put in a new furnace or boiler to the tune of fifty about fifty thousand dollars. And plus, I was paying a lawyer because of things that were going on at the store. And finally, I filed a judgment against them. And of course, that has not been paid, and they were eventually evicted from the store. I would like to say that the people that I have in there now, I'm very proud of. They put in, they are open from eight, nine in the morning until nine at night. And the rent was fifteen hundred dollars, and I reduced it to fourteen hundred dollars to pay so that it would be easier for them. And they really do bring a lot of people into Marshfield because they are the only Mexican grocery store in a forty mile radius. They have two phone lines where people can call Mexico, which they are paid for. And with all of the above, and lawyers' fees and so on and so forth. And the people that were previously in there for postponing court dates. And so my lawyer finally said, we will just file a judgment, and I have to date not received the monies owed me, which are, you won't believe how much it is, but it's very thousands and thousands of dollars. But I'm not giving up at seventy-nine. I see the light at the end of the tunnel. And I am here to ask you to grant them a license. I have contacted the Wood County Treasurer's Office, and we have come to an agreement that I would pay a thousand dollars a month. And I did last month, and I will this month. And I'm in touch with Heather down there, who's the Wood County Treasurer. To date, I have all my electric, water, sewer bills, gas bills, they are all paid. I am here to let you know what happened, how it happened, and what I'm going to do to try to resolve it. And so I please ask you at this time if you could allow them a license so they could sell food and liquor. Does anyone have any questions of me?
Any questions from the council? Mr. Butky?
What's the amount that's owed Shelby in real estate?
I owe, I have several rental properties in town, and I actually do have one of them for sale now listed with a realtor. And I actually owe about between fifty and sixty thousand. And but hopefully, this house will sell, and I can pay it off entirely.
If I could, could somebody state the the policy that we have with the city, Mrs. Hall, maybe?
Well, our policy with the city is any person applying for any type of license or permit, we are not able to issue that until the fees are paid in full unless the common council makes a consideration. Therefore, that is why I could not issue their licenses, even though the JL committee approved them. I could not issue these because the building owner has his outstanding taxes due.
So there's two issues there. Obviously, the one is the owner of the building, and the other one is the owner of the business. And that's basically what we are here discussing tonight. And that, so you do have an agreement then with the county?
Yes, with Heather, who I believe is the town, Wood County Treasurer.
Okay.
Right. And I have agreed to pay a thousand dollars a month. But like I said, I do have this property, and I have a realtor showing it. And I really think that it will sell within the next couple of months, and I would be able to pay it in full.
Okay.
But I, you know, I can't say for sure. You know what I mean.
Right. Right. But is your is your agreement with the county, have you already made?
Yes, I, yes, I.
Towards that?
I did last month, and I'm going to this month. Yes.
And is that in writing, or is this a verbal agreement?
It is a verbal agreement, sir. But I can get it in writing and present it to someone if you so need it.
Okay, that's fine. Mr. Bargender?
Thank you. You had mentioned that you had a fifty thousand dollar loss. And what year did you say that was?
In two thousand and eighteen, nineteen.
Okay. But you have delinquent taxes back from two thousand and seventeen.
That is, that is, that is correct, sir.
Okay, thank you. Just I want to make that clear when the loss, what your loss was.
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. So with that information, I'll entertain any motion by the members of the council in regard to consideration of granting a conditional use license pursuant to the nine dash oh two sixteen C of the city code. Is there a motion? A motion by Mr. Butky? Is there a second and a second? Absolutely. That's a negative motion. Okay. And Mr. Wagner, are you seconding that motion?
No, sir. I understood what you said to be granting the license, and I didn't understand. So I.
Right now, the motion on there is to deny this. Is there a second to that? Mr. Wagner, you've got your second.
Can I withdraw the second? Yeah, I withdraw the second. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So there is no, oh, second by Mr. Hemler. Discussion. Mr. Wagner?
Yeah, I think we've sat on the license committee for years and had cases similar to this. And basically, there is a, there is a plan and an agreement to pay the taxes. And the other part is that if we deny this license, we're basically cutting off the source of income to pay those taxes. So it makes more sense for us at this point to grant the license so that the cash flow can continue. If for some reason or another it fails in the future, then we'll find out about it through the county, and we will be informed, and we can act on it accordingly. But at this time, as long as there's a plan and a cash flow, and it's reasonable, I would support giving those licenses.
Thank you, Mr. Preschel.
Thank you. I would agree with what Mr. Wagner had to say, as well as, you know, in this time, we've been talking about trying to keep our businesses active and and more people working. And now we're considering with basically not allowing a business to continue to actively employ people in our community and provide a service to people in our community. So I think that I would also support giving them the license at this time.
Mr. Butky?
Let's throw all of our rules in our, because that's, we're making exceptions. I could go along with the, if we need to put some, first, I want to see the documentation, right? Second of all, there has to be a time if they're delinquent. Turn them on a time, then we have to deal with that. And I just don't think we should have it open end.
And Mr. Butky, just so you're aware, you can put that and stipulate that in your motion to approve, that we, that you need to see the payments are made on time, and the effort is there. I really don't think this is the. I really don't think this is the climate that when we say we are out and we are pro-business, that we want to go shut a business down. The business owner is not the person or the entity that is, that has not paid the taxes.
It's me.
Point of order. You're, you're not supposed to be doing that from your seat.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, please vote. And that motion fails seven to three. Is there a different motion? Mr. Wagner, you're signaling, are you?
Yes, I don't have anything on my screen here. Okay, there we go.
Oh, it's got to, she has to clear it.
I would make a motion to approve the license conditionally that we, that the clerk receive, what? You turkey. All right, I would make a motion to grant the license and that the, on the condition that the owner of the store or the owner of the property would give a written report or a progress report to the clerk's office at least monthly.
Thank you. Is there a second? And Mr. Whitzel seconds that motion. Any discussion? Mr. Wagner? No. Mr. Whitel?
Thank you. A conditional license lasts for how long, and under what stipulations does that get revoked? Because it's a conditional license, if I'm understanding.
I would then amend that. This license will be good until June thirty, the 2021, unless I'm notified that the taxes are not being paid, and then I would bring it back before this committee to possibly suspend or revoke.
All I wanted to thank you.
Mr. Bargender?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a kind of unusual circumstance here. You know, I, I feel that we should be positive for our businesses here in town, especially during the COVID crisis here. It would be irresponsible for this council to deny those folks a license based on what their landlord failed to do. I, I just feel that we, we should just, you know, grant this license, you know, with, with this, with the conditions that, on, that they, you know, that the taxes will be paid. But I just really feel uncomfortable denying any type of license to these people who are trying, working hard to make a living in the city of Marshville. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Sparrows?
I actually agree with some of those points. I mean, it, it's unfortunate that, you know, we're looking at punishing one business who's doing what they're supposed to be doing because another business owner has failed to pay her taxes. So I can go along with this, but I do want us to keep a very close eye on whether the, these payments are being made on a regular basis, and if not, then I want to have that option of, of, of looking at this again.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Mr. Buckey?
I will make an amendment to that motion. If the house is sold, then it would be paid in full. If the house that you're looking at could be. I think that's fair. I think Shelby's willing to do that. She stated that before. So go with the payments that you have set up, but if she sells that house, then it will be paid in full, the delinquent tax.
Tom, if you're amending it, can you push your buttons, please?
Oh, I'm sorry.
So that's a motion to amend. Is there a second to that motion to amend? A second by Mr. Hemler? Any discussion? Mr. Bargender?
I just, I just had a further comment before the motion was made, that, you know, basically, it's going to be up to Shelby here. I mean, if, if, if you drop the ball, don't make your payments, you're going to make those, your tenants suffer. So please, make the payments.
And I will, and I would be happy to, to send you a copy of the, the money order that I sent the county, to send it to the clerk every month, as a copy of that is verification that I have done what I was going to do. Sorry.
Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, please vote.
Can the clerk repeat the motion, please? The amendment is if, if she sells her house, that money is to be paid, or to be used to pay her taxes in full.
Mr. Hemler? And motion carries eight to two. Now the original motion, can you bring it back? Grant the license on the condition that the owner of the property give a written a report to the clerk on office, on monthly payments of the tax. Is there a, there's a, we have a motion and a second. There any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, please vote. And that motion carries ten to zero. Thank you. Item K, presentation of the city's code enforcement process presented by Steve Barge, City Administrator.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate that, Mayor. And we've talked about this before. This is going to be a report on how we do code enforcement in the city, and, you know, some of the things we go through, some of the types of issues we deal with, the process, and how we handle some of the, the opportunities and challenges that come our way as we go through trying to enforce some of our city ordinances. I just, full disclosure, I actually did code enforcement for quite a while when I was first employed for the city of Fridley, one of the Twin Cities suburbs. Code enforcement was part of my job as a planning assistant, one of several planning assistants for the city of Fridley. And I once thought that maybe I could write a book about some of the experiences, and then I, I realized I could, but nobody would want to read it probably. But if I wrote it, I would definitely laugh at some of the things you come across, because it's a very challenging world to be dealing with people, property owners, and some of the cases that come up. Just to start off, code enforcement is a very broad category. I mean, people hear the word code enforcement, and they wonder what we're talking about. I want to kind of touch on that a little bit. It's conducted by multiple city departments, and that's one of the challenges we'll talk about here later. Well, I've got a code enforcement complaint. Well, who do I talk to? What number? What department? Sometimes it's a little bit hard for the average citizen to know where their complaints should go as they're handled by, by several departments in the city. My goal for tonight again is to describe the code enforcement process, address any questions from the mayor and council. That's how we got here anyway. Several of you have brought up questions before about how we handle some of the types of things you hear from constituents and things that you actually see yourself when you're out driving around and walking around the community. First of all, our intent. Our intent is to respond to all complaints in a timely manner. There are challenges to that, too, based upon the time of year that these come in to play. I know from doing code enforcement myself that the, the spring and early summer is a very crazy time. People are out working in their yards. They're looking across the street, and they're saying, I'm trying to spruce up my yard. Why am I looking at that junk car? Why am I looking at that old set of tires next to the garage? And they want to see improvement. That's when a lot of the calls come in for some of these types of complaints. Our intent is also to work with property owners who seek to comply. We're not here to be horrible, awful bureaucrats, but we want to see his compliance with the code, and we try to work with people to help achieve that when we can. And also to note, citations and fines happen, probably more than you realize. We end up sending people into the municipal court system for ordinance violations, and, and we do that as we need to. But compliance is the goal. Our ultimate goal is to get compliance, not to, to see how much in terms of citations and fines we can issue to property owners. These are just examples of complaints. It is by no means the full range, but these are some of the ones I remember dealing with, and from talking to some of our department heads, I see them dealing with. There are certainly others, but some common ones, development services, Josh's department, deteriorating buildings and fences. I've heard this from several council members along the way. That shed is falling down. That building in the back of the, the property is dilapidated. Can't we do something about it? Fences oftentimes will come into disrepair as well. Illegal home occupations. There are certain things you can do from your home that fit with the neighborhood, and they're called out in code, but then there's some other times people will start a business in their home, or a business that might have been qualifying to start out with grows, starts having more traffic, parking issues, noise that distracts the, the neighbors, and those have to be dealt with. Ordinance enforcement officers, under our police department's umbrella, they deal with things like junk cars, and, and you hear the word junk car all the time. I've driven some that probably would have looked like they qualified. But these are technically referred to as unlicensed or inoperable vehicles. They don't have current license plates and tabs, or it's pretty evident that you couldn't go onto the street and operate them, you know, down the road. Also, outside storage materials. That's one of the big ones that, that we hear. People have just junk in their yards. And, you know, people don't like looking at that. They just leave. I mentioned tires before. It might be old appliances. It might be any number of things that are just left outside in full view, and that's an issue as well. And then I noted for public works, the street department gets complaints on high grass and weeds that come up a lot, especially again in the early part of the spring that they try to keep up with. And then also in the winter, ice and snow removal. People need to remove the ice and snow from their sidewalks, for which they're responsible in a timely manner. And when that doesn't happen, we get calls about unsafe conditions for pedestrians, and we have to address those concerns as well. Complaint handling process would be hard to, to put into words what everybody does, because they're all a little bit different. First of all, let me tell you that complaints come to us through a variety of methods, and that may be one of the concerns we have to keep addressing as a city. You know, we have geo reporting, but that's only used by certain people. Some people will call, some people will email. Some people will try and connect with us through, you know, other means, Facebook. But sometimes we get them in different ways, and people aren't sure who to call, so just getting them to the right person can be a challenge. The inspections are conducted by the appropriate staff, so once we find out what the problem is, we get it to the right person, and they go out and take a look, make an assessment, and then follow up, if necessary, with a letter, a phone call, whatever needs to be done to try and correct the problem. The time to comply depends upon the circumstances, and this might be one that is hard for the average person to wrap their arms around. You tend to think, well, you send a letter, and you give them seven days, and if they don't comply, then you do the next thing. Well, sometimes, I'll be honest with you, our staff comes across things that are a lot larger than can be complied with in seven days, where people have accumulated large amounts of, of junk or, or numbers of vehicles or whatever. Some condition makes it difficult to comply within the same timeline that other notices might afford. So the time to comply in some cases is fixed, but in other cases, it depends upon the conditions that need to be rectified. And then the health and safety of the public is always the highest priority. The top of the list for our staff is going to be those types of issues that could threaten or concern the health and safety of people. Those need to be prioritized above the types of things that are nuisances. Not that they're not important, but certainly safety is top. What are our options if there's no voluntary compliance? Well, again, this depends a lot on what we're talking about. Are we talking about high grass and weeds that are out of control? Are we talking about storage of junk next to the garage? Are we talking about a, a building that's slowly deteriorating? These are all treated a little bit differently. But the, the goal is staff resolves the problem, and the owner sends a bill. That, that happens in certain types of complaints. I mentioned the ones that go to Two Streets, which is a, a division of Public Works. Well, weeds, we can't just send letters and send letters, and then, you know, it comes along in August, and you still haven't complied, and they're up here. Ice and snow on the sidewalk is a danger to pedestrians. It needs to be dealt with. Those are more likely to be conditions where we actually take an action, mow the grass, clean up the sidewalk from snow and ice, and send the property owner a bill for our services. Another option is to, to issue a citation and send the case into municipal court. That happens a lot of times on standard ordinance violations. They come right before the judge in this room, and they, they're dealt with in terms of a violation of whatever code they are being assessed with. And those can result in fines. They can result in other actions depending upon how the court sees it. Beyond that, let's see what happens if we don't get compliance that way. There'll be times when staff in the city attorney's office will talk about other legal remedies. It may be a raise and repair order for a building, where we have to give a certain amount of time for someone to either fix the building or tear it down. And those, I got to tell you, this is one of the things that annoys sometimes mayors and council members. Those take a while to process. People have rights for their properties that sometimes drags out, and we keep pursuing them to try and get compliance, but it's not always easy. Here's some of our common challenges that I want to go through real quickly. First of all, I said it earlier, the complainant is not often sure who to contact. And, you know, we try to help. Hopefully, if they call our general number, someone can help plug them into the right department. But sometimes it's a little difficult. Sometimes people don't even call, I imagine, because they don't know who to call. That's a challenge we have to keep working on. That's something we have to continue to improve on, whether it's our website, our Facebook page, or whatever, some way to reach out and let people know who they can call for certain types of issues. And we'll keep working on that. Staff time may be limited. I mentioned that before. In spring and summer, people who do these kind of duties run themselves ragged at times. Again, I'm no different than anybody else. My wife's been out planting flowers. We're making the yard look as nice as we can. That's the time when people notice what's going on around them, and they don't like it in many cases. Compliance can be an up and down ride. What do I mean by that? It's the guy, and I learned this very early on when I was doing code enforcement in Fridley, Minnesota, the guy who starts fixing it up, and then, oh, it's two steps forward, one step back. You go out there a few days later just to make sure it all got resolved. Well, I just got this in for my brother-in-law. I'm sorry, he dropped it in the driveway, but I'll get this out of here by next week. And you have to continue to stay on it to get to full compliance. That sometimes gives the impression that the, the people doing the code enforcement are not doing their job, but it's not really the case. It's, it's they're trying diligently to stay on those people and make sure we do get to the finish line. Sometimes the code isn't always fully clear and enforceable. Everybody in this room might look at one of the ordinance provisions and say, well, clearly it means this. Well, in some cases, we talk to the city attorney, and he says, well, there's another way that could be read. And then we bring it before you and see if it can be tightened in some way. Here's a big one. Property is in transition. You have no idea how many of these, these properties are going through foreclosure. The, the people have walked away. You try and find someone responsible, the bank, some finance company. Hey, not our issue. And, you know, we've washed our hands, but now it's going through, you know, sheriff's sale or whatever is happening. Just try to get someone responsible, maintain the property. It's not always easy, believe me. Multi-department complaints. Again, we get a complaint that involves junk cars, weeds, dilapidated shed, all these kind of things, and, and we farm them out, hopefully, to the right people. But coordinating to make sure that, that everything is corrected can be tough sometimes. Enforcement limits, managing expectations. Oftentimes, the person who calls has a, has a vivid vision in their mind of what it should look like when they're done. This house is junky, and I want it to look like this when it's done. Well, we go through, and we find the codes that they're in violation of, and they clean them up, and the person says, are you kidding me? The house still needs paint. Are you serious? They've got those kids' bikes next to the house. Well, kids will have bikes, and they'll sometimes set them next to the house. Their expectations of the final product doesn't always match with what we can do as city officials, and that can cause friction as well. And then complain it wishes to remain anonymous, which is anybody's right. If someone calls tomorrow morning and says, I want to complain about a house on Cedar Avenue, and we say, well, sir, can I get your name and address? I don't want to tell you. Click. We still have to check it out. We still have to follow up on it. But if we don't know who to call back, then later on, the, the person sitting there looking across the street saying, city staff isn't doing anything. I can see they're not doing anything. Well, they have no idea that we found out that what's happening there actually isn't a code violation, or that something else is going on that we can't tell them that is going to court. But they just don't see the results, and so they think we're, we're, we've dropped the ball, but we have no one to call and discuss the case with. So in summary, and then we'll get to questions here soon, which I, I imagine there'll be some. I hope there are. We try to address complaints responsibly and thoroughly as best we can. We try to complete, or to treat complainants and property owners fairly. Think of the golden rule. We got the call, and we went out there because someone maybe is running a place that looks kind of junky. But you have to start from the perspective that that property owner has rights and deserves to be treated as fairly and as appropriately as anybody else. So they may have some concerns. You may find out that they've, you know, gone through some troubles. They've, they've, you know, had some financial issues or whatever. It doesn't mean you ignore the code, but it means you treat them as a person the same way you would treat the complainant. We seek municipal code changes as appropriate. I know that Josh and the staff have brought forward some, probably more times than not related to zoning, but, but other times, we bring forward something if there's a, a code that doesn't seem fully enforceable or clear for some reason, so that we can get it clarified, so that the people that own property know what to expect if they hear from us. And again, the overall goal is code compliance, not punishment. I won't say that we haven't written citations. I won't say that we haven't been part of a person getting assessed fines, or in some cases, having a building torn down on their property. But that is not our goal. That is not what we're here for. We're here to try and get compliance with the code, not to inflict punishment on landowners. So that's kind of a high level of what we do, just to give you a base foundation. I know that many of you, that I've been here nine years now. I know that I get referrals from you, and I know other staff people do about certain properties, and, and they wonder, you know, you wonder why can't more be done about property X? you wonder why can't more be done about property X. And so I don't know that I want to get into specific properties tonight. We can talk about those afterwards. But any questions you might have about how we do this, you know, whether or not we can be more effective in some way that you would like to see us pursue, whatever you want to discuss at this point, I turn it over for questions and comments.
Thank you, Mr. Butke.
Yeah, I realize that these are based on complaints. But, and I don't expect our staff to go around every place and look at them. But when they're out and about doing inspections on other properties, you can't tell me they don't see this stuff. And we can all, we all talked about the pictures that we could bring in. I really believe that, and in the past too, not just our current inspectors, but some people don't want to be the bad person. I really believe that. Aldermen should not be the cops. That's who we are. We get all these complaints. There was a house on Blodgett, East Blodgett, and it was total junk, rats, you name it. It was drug-infested, so there was more things there. And that was, that was an issue, and there was a lady that lives near there, and she called me, and she was totally frustrated. And I told her, I said, we try. We as aldermen try. Maybe you have to come to a council meeting and let people know, let staff know what some of them are dealing with. Now, I will add a girl to our ordinance lady, the newest ordinance officer we had. I know she was on that house, on that project there, and it eventually got done. So, you know, we solved that. But you're right, Steve. People do not know what department to go to, because according to what you had up here, junk properties are not necessarily the ordinance officers. It's more the billing inspector. So people don't know which is which. I think we got to clean some of that up. Let's see, what else do I have? I did talk to Chief Grasma, I believe, yesterday, and asked his idea on there. And if I could, and if chief is willing to talk about, you know, we mentioned that, like, our ordinance officers, two aren't really enough. We don't have, we're not covering on Sundays because we have two people. If we could get another ordinance officer, and I'm not proposing that right now, but that would free us up for different things, including snow in the wintertime. That's a joke. That is absolutely a joke out there. The people that aren't shoveling, and it's not the elderly that aren't shoveling. It's mostly the renters that are not shoveling. Mailmen come to me, and they complain, and I said, write down the address. I'll turn it in, and so on and so forth. But I think with some tweaking on between Josh's people and the police, and if we could possibly look at the ordinance with the police to maybe get another person, but we got to come up with a result. It should not, again, I can't stress this enough. Our inspectors, whether they're Josh's or Chief Grasmas, they're out and about for different things, and they see some of this stuff, and nothing is done. So we got to get a little firmer on that, or we had talked about that, or I did with the chief. So if you want to add on to that, chief, that's fine, but...
If he couldn't hear?
Absolutely.
Yes, just, Tom and I had talked about ways to be more proactive than reactive. We're often reactive in these situations where it's either complaint-driven, or most of the times it is complaint-driven. We would love to be more proactive. We don't have the means right now with two ordinance officers to address each of the ordinance violations. They're responding to so many different ordinance violations, parking violations, garbage complaints, animal complaints, that it's really difficult to be as proactive as they could be. Adding an additional ordinance officer at some point in the future would help that. It may also be able to help with, you know, developmental services and Public Works to be able to maybe address some of those on a proactive basis with our departments working hand in hand. So that was one of those options that we did discuss is in an effort to be proactive, adding an additional ordinance enforcement officer would definitely assist in that.
I guess I would, and Steve, you already said this, but I think, I think Josh's people and the ordinance people from the police department got to get together and come up with whatever works best, so we know who's doing what. I didn't even know who to call on some of these things, you know, so we need to tweak this.
Yeah, let me, if I can just briefly take his two comments, Mayor. The second one first on communication and letting people know where they can turn. I, this is something that out of the last couple of weeks, so having this discussion with staff members and preparing for this, I've kind of realized that, you know, it'd be hard to expect the average person to know where to turn. So I want to work with the affected department heads and with Tom Lox, our communications director. I'm not sure if the website, if we can get maybe a page on the website, or if it's maybe social media, or where else we can do. Maybe it's a combination of everything, all the above, as they say. But maybe a way to help people realize that if this is what you're observing, you can do this. If this is what you're observing, you know, call this person. Otherwise, I would guess that the average person maybe feels hesitant to pick up the phone or to go on their computer if they don't know where they're going. So point taken on that. On the part as far as, you know, people driving down the road to go to see another address, it's a building inspector, it's whoever it is, that they pass a place that is on their left or right that's kind of junky. I get what you're saying. I do. I think more often than not, people looking to go to a site are kind of focused on where they're going. Doesn't mean that they couldn't notice and flag something and write it down and share it with someone. I do think there's also a hesitancy though, and I saw this when I was working in the Twin Cities, that if you are doing code enforcement mainly on a complaint basis, that if you pick and choose someone on a thoroughfare that you drive past, someone will call you and say, you know, who called, and, you know, we're not going to tell you. Because if nobody called, in their mind, why is the city care? And I think that that might be ill-founded in some respect, but I think this is why most cities end up being complaint-driven. But I'm not, I'm not arguing with your comments. Certainly, we drive past places all the time when we're going to sites that probably are worthy of being flagged.
Thank you, Mr. Bargender.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. I agree a lot with what Mr. Butke has been talking about here. Those of us on Public Works, we've had these little discussions here and there that, you know, we need to get started on code enforcement here in the city of Marshfield. I drive around too. I see these blighted properties, these junk cars, appliances, broken-down fences, a lot of the things that Steve mentioned earlier. And I truly believe that we need to enforce this on a timely basis, because it just seems like when people see junk cars sit around, they think, well, maybe it's okay if I just park my car here. You know, nobody seems to care. The grass isn't getting cut. Well, other people ain't cutting their grass either. It's kind of a monkey see, monkey do approach. And if you, you know, if you've been in big cities and you see these blighted neighborhoods, you often wonder, well, how did they come about? You know? I mean, they came about because somebody wasn't doing their job. I mean, so, you know, we live in a really nice, clean, safe city here, and we want to keep it that way. So I encourage all the council members and the city staff, if you see a blighted property, you know, let's get on it. Let's get started. I know the process takes some time depending on what ordinance violation they are in. But, you know, if we don't do anything about it, it just gets worse. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fire.
Yeah, I've got, I've got one of the districts that will be what you'd call interesting. I've got about three, four, five spots in my district. I have to give staff credit. If I talk to the ordinance people, and they go, they'll talk to this one person, they'll clean it up. A month later, it's right back where it is. They just don't seem to want to follow the rules. And there's one on the corner, well, now it's, the street's being fixed, so we don't have to worry about it right now, but it's a corner of Cleveland and Central. That's been like that since he moved in from out of town, and there's, you see, nothing get done. There's got to be at least three or four vehicles in that yard. And anybody going to St. John's, they got to just wonder what's going on there. I guess it's, I understand a one-time complaint is something, but when you get habitual land property owners or rental property that they don't clean up, we have to start enforcing it somehow, because we're not getting it done. And some people just, I'm not going to mention any names, but some of my constituents or the owners are disoriented. They're going to do it their way, whether we want it or not.
I, I'm glad you said that. That was part of what I mentioned earlier too. One of the hardest things to deal with in code enforcement are the people who clean up and then fall back, and you kind of look at them like, you know, do you not get it? And you're not always sure why they do that. I don't think they do it to annoy people. It's just their mindset isn't fully where it needs to be. They'll comply, but then they, they backslide. And I think the best we can do is stay on them and continue to push as hard as we can. Once they've cleaned up, I mean, it's kind of a new complaint starting over, believe it or not, most of the time. But you make a good point. I mean, those are things we have to watch. Neighborhoods are usually spiraling in a positive way or spiraling in a negative way. And I think this is what you were after a minute ago, Ken. If left unaddressed, you see neighborhoods start to take a hit, maybe several blocks, because people look around and say, why should I clean up my yard if my neighbors are not doing anything? I get it.
Thank you, Mr. Preslal.
Thank you. I just want to shout out to the city employees here that I've dealt with. I've always gotten a prompt response to any complaint that I've made, either something I've generated myself or on behalf of one of my constituents. Most recently, one of the complaints I had was about some concerns that I contacted Dan about, and within an hour or so, I was getting responses also from the fire department and the police department. So they are working together to try to solve problems. So I think, I think they are doing a great job. Obviously, you're not going to be able to clean up every problem that comes along the same day, but I think that they're working diligently to accomplish their duties.
Thank you. We appreciate that a lot. That's where we want to try and be.
Thank you. Anything further for Steve? Mr. Butke?
Yeah, I have to, one thing that's been bothering me over the years is when we have the concrete mediums in the streets, and you'd see weeds a foot tall. And I see other communities do that, and to me, that was a community impression. They don't care. I contacted Chris, our new street superintendent, and looks nice, Chris. Thank you. So that's an image thing, that type of stuff, along with the junk properties. So good job.
That's, that's a good point. If we're going to expect the best from others, we should be doing our best as well. And going back to what was said earlier, I do hope you give us a little bit of grace during the late spring and early summer, because I know, I don't do code enforcement anymore, but I do know that that's a crazy time when a lot of people have concerns, and they're valid ones, but they pile up over a short period of time there in that, that part of the year.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item L, presentation review of the timeline of the 2020 borrowing, presented by Ron Ammon, Finance Director.
Thank you. I also have Dave Ferris from Ailers on Zoom here with us to kind of cover some of the items. And if it's not a problem, we'll take them in order L, then N, then M, because that's how it flows a little bit better. So for timeline and general notes, just want to say a few things. You know, we're borrowing later in the year than we typically would. The reason for that is with our 2018 audit being kind of a mess. I wanted the 2019 audit report in hand before we went back to Moody's. You know, we still have, we still have a couple things to work on, but I thought, to me, the audit was much, much cleaner, and it supports some of the things we're telling Moody's, that our kids are paying for themselves. You know, we're making progress, those kind of things. So going forward, we typically start February 1st on the calendar, start the process, and then have the money in hand by late spring before project season. So hopefully, we'll move that up after this year. And this question comes up a lot. As of 2019, what was our borrowing capacity? So borrowing capacity by state statute, which is 5% of the equalized valuation, was about $85 million. Our GO debt at the end was in the $45 million range, about 53%, 54% of the total. So, and then in September, October, if you remember last year, I'll come back with a really detailed debt analysis. But keep in mind that about 68% of our debt, GO debt, is general fund. The rest is supported by, by kids and our, some of our enterprise funds. All right, so what's in your packet? So the item labeled City of Marshfield Long-Term Borrowing for 2020, is this a simple list of the items being borrowed for by fund? And I did highlight one item that we took off the list. So the housing incentive program, it's approved, it's in the budget, still going forward, but we didn't have an immediate need for those funds. So I pulled it off the borrowing list. So what would happen is if Josh finds someone tomorrow, you know, after we start this process, we'd short-term finance it or cash finance it, or if the timing would work out great, we'd just roll it into the next borrowing. So I did pull that off the list. So this is just a simple listing of the $6,877 project costs to be borrowed before we kind of worked it through to figure out which ones were going to be bonds and which ones were not going to be bonds. All right. So when we work through the list, the final breakdown is out of this project cost. About $6,141,000 was eligible for bonds. That leaves about $736,000 of items that we could finance through notes. But because of issuance costs, what we'll likely do is we'll probably look at a state trust fund loan for those four or five years, depending on the rates. And then we'll use that to, when Dave talks, he uses the word "structure." We use that for structure. So every time we borrow, we look at what our payments are out, you know, the next 10 years, and we try to flatten those as much as we can so that the principal and interest isn't jumping around from year to year. All right. So timeline, tonight we have the declaration of official intent. July 28th, we'll set the sale, and depending on what's approved with the parameter sale, we would either close out the process either mid-September or mid-October. And the parameter sale allows us to speed things up a little bit. Any questions on just kind of general state of our debt? And I'll turn it over to Dave for the next part.
Questions from the council?
All right. So Dave, if you want to start with the parameter sale info sheet that's in your packet, kind of go over what that does for us, and take it from there.
Do they have the Marshfield version instead of the Stoughton version?
That's a good question, because they're different, so. I don't have a copy. What's in the packet? They should be mostly the same.
I suppose, is there any way for me to share my screen?
Yes.
I could probably, I could probably bring it up out of my email that I sent to you, and that way, because there is a difference. There's dates in the one.
If, I think if you share screen, Dave, if you share screen down on the bottom with the little green arrow, right?
Yeah, let me find the email first that I sent you yesterday. Okay, so then... Where am I here? Let's see, I want to do this one. Can you see that?
Yep, looks good. Everybody else? Steve, good? Okay, yep, we're good to go, Dave.
So I thought it'd be a little bit better if you actually saw what parameter sale meant for the city of Marshfield as opposed to the city of Stoughton. Really, what a parameter sale is, is it's really not a whole lot different than how we always sell our bonds for the city. The major difference really is the fact that instead of sale day being the same day as the city council meeting, we have the opportunity to sell it on the day that isn't a city council meeting. And the reason that's important in this, in this year is because, you know, right now, we're, you know, we're a little late in the year as far as selling our bonds. And Ron told you the reason why he delayed that this year. But if we go on the, the calendar that has to do with just doing it on a regular sale, we'd set the sale either way on the next meeting, the 28th. If we sell the bond, normally, we wouldn't be able to sell the bond until September 22nd. And the reason that is, is that we need 30 days between the day we set the sale and the day that you sell, because there's something called permissive referendum, that if somebody were to challenge you on the issuance of bonds, they'd have to go out and... they'd have to go out and signatures and they could potentially stop your sale. So we have to give them the full 30 days. Well, unfortunately, your first meeting after the 30 days is the day after Labor Day, and that is a terrible day to sell a bond. A lot of underwriters take a couple more days off typically that week, and so you might lose out on some bidders just if you went that day. So then that moves the sale to basically a month and a half until you're almost two months out from when you set the sale, which would be September 22nd. And then we wouldn't be able to actually get the city money until October 15th. And you've been paying for projects and really delaying your money into the city is probably not the way to go. So what we were able to do is what's called a parameter sale. I actually have a couple of clients that like this method so much that they have decided to go forward with it more. It gives you flexibility on the day you sell. So what we're doing is we're going to actually sell on, we're proposing to sell on August 31st, which is a Monday. It's the fifth Monday, which is a very low volume day. And the reason being is that most meetings are either the first and third Mondays or the second and fourth Mondays, but nobody typically has meetings on the fifth Monday. There are a couple of those oddball communities that do have like second and last or first and last, but typically, that's not the case. So we're proposing to sell the bonds on the 31st. We believe that you'll have more interest in your bonds because there won't be as much volume out there to get the underwriters' attention and that you may get even a few more bidders than we would have normally. That also allows us to move up the closing date and you'd almost get your money about a month sooner than you would if we went through the normal sales process. So that's kind of what the parameter sale does for you as far as flexibility. The other thing that it was good for when COVID decided to rear its ugly head was that if the market looked pretty bouncy, which it was, you know, right after I visited you for the, setting the sale for the electric utility bond, that interest rate bounced all over the place. So we actually postponed some sales. And having it on a parameters basis means that we can pretty much set that sale date whenever it makes sense then. It just gives you a lot more flexibility. So what you'd be doing if you went the way of a parameter sale is Bond Council, Rebecca Quarles, would draft a resolution similar to what you usually approve at the set sale. The only thing is that we would come up with a set of parameters, which would be in your, your pre-sale report on the 28th, that would say that the bids have to meet these certain parameters. And if they do, then we'll consider them. But it also, when we get sale day and they meet those parameters, you would vote, the resolution that you would vote for at the next meeting would allow either, it could be the mayor or Steve or Ron, whoever you decide that you want to sign, sign off on those bids, would give them the, you would give them the authorization to accept the low bid. So that's really the big things as far as what the parameter sale is about.
And that'll be a motion at the next meeting. So that's just kind of letting you know what we'll bring forward. But it's got a lot outside. It's already things that have been approved. You know, it's already budgeted. It just gives, like Dave's saying, a flexibility and hopefully grab a little better interest rate. Any questions on parameter sale and the set sale?
Questions from the council? I don't see any.
All right. Next, Dave, you want to talk about the declaration of official intent? So this is, we're skipping ahead one item, Resolution 2020-31.
So one of the things that the IRS has fairly strong dislike is if you try to reimburse yourself for hard costs in your borrowing. So basically, if you started doing construction and that, you tried to grab costs that are farther than 60 days prior to the day that you, you know, basically approved the sale, approved to sell your bonds, you can't include those into a tax exempt borrowing. So what ends up happening, and I'll give you, for instance, Ron, it's okay if I talk about that police property, right?
Yep, absolutely.
Okay. So earlier in the year, January, you bought a piece of property. I think it's right next to the police building or it's a garage or something that's right next to the police building. Because that property was bought 60 days, more than 60 days prior to when we're going to set the sale, which is two weeks from now, that part of that, that borrowing that we wanted to put in the bonds can't be there because it's outside of that 60-day rule. And so what happens is that Ron's going to pull that into a state trust fund loan. And the state trust fund loan doesn't care whether it's taxable or not. But you can't, you can't use tax exempt financing. So the ding here is that you're not able to take advantage of the lower tax exempt rate. So to combat this issue, what is available to the city, and on the next resolution, I'll tell you about a little more flexibility. But what you can do, and Ron has listed all the projects that potentially could have hard costs, you know, back, you know, going forward or even back, you know, you can go back 60 days at this point. But if you do this today, I think it actually will get you 60 days back from today instead of wait until the set sale. But what it does is it allows you, so let me do an example. Let's say like at budget time, we decide we're going to do these capital projects. We can actually do a resolution declaring that we have an intent to reimburse ourselves for hard costs in the future until the borrowing comes in. So at budget time, you could do this declaration of intent for what your proposed capital improvements is. And that way, when we got to the borrowing, all hard costs would be able to be into the tax exempt issue and you would have no, no issues with that. So that's the problem right now is that we've got a few things that fell outside of that 60 days. And that's unfortunate because we really like to have you save as much money as possible on your borrowing.
So any questions on that? So any questions, clarifications? Again, kind of an odd year, you know, we wanted to borrow earlier. We didn't think it was a good idea, you know, for the city's credit rating to go earlier with prior year audit report. So kind of some, hopefully some one-time item here. And then we go back to February borrowing, March, April money, and we're, we're good on the front end of all our projects.
Mr. Wagner?
What, what source of funding did you originally use for that, the $260,000?
We, we passed the, I'd have to look back, we, we cash financed it basically, knowing it would be, end up being borrowed for. Fund down supplied, I guess is fairly common phrase. But we did bring it to the council for approval, pushed it to 2020 so that it didn't show up on our 2019 cash flow statement.
Hey, Ron?
Yes?
Ron, question I would have, when you brought that to the council, did you make comments at that meeting when you brought that forward that you would be financing it through long-term borrowing? Is there anything that documents that?
I'd have to look at the minutes. I'm sure I, I'm sure we alluded to it. I don't know if it's officially in the minutes or not.
Okay. I was going to say, if you find something that says something like that, I might encourage you to run that past Bond Council to see if that's, if that would work. I mean, I think this is a cleaner way, and I'd encourage you to use this way that we're talking about tonight. But we might be able to dodge a bullet, at least with a question, we'll see. Might be worth a try.
And wasn't, wasn't, and I'm sorry to bring this up, Dave, but with the Baltic property we're talking about, wasn't also that Orals, our Bond Council questioned it for long-term finance because we weren't certain of the future use?
Oh, true. Yeah.
Okay, so that.
Yeah. So if there's a, if there was a possibility that you would use that property for a private purpose in the future, then that would be taxable as well.
Okay. So what I'm saying is kind of either way, it was most likely that we weren't going to be able to get into the bond either because of the timeframe to reimburse it or the fact if we did go a long-term bond, it limited what we use that property for in the long run. So I think either way, we were kind of stuck either going notes or state trust fund loan. Any other questions or comments on that?
Other questions?
If not, I'd look for a motion to approve Resolution 2020-31.
All right. So is there a motion to approve Resolution Number 2020-30? We'll do them separately.
Thirty-one.
You're doing 31 first?
Yep.
A motion to approve Resolution Number 2020-31. Is it? Oh, I'm sorry. Nick, who else had their hand up? Nick? Okay, now there's Nick. And a second by Mr. Fire. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, please vote. That motion carries 10 to 0.
All right. Next up, turn it back to Dave. If you want to maybe unshare your screen, I think we're done with the parameter sale. Talk about resolution.
You don't like that?
No big deal. Talk about Resolution 20-2020-30 Designating Officials.
Okay. So what this resolution does is it allows you to give Ron the authorization to put the declaration of intent to reimburse on file. It's not uncommon. When I was at Wana Key, we had the village board authorize me to do that. So really, it's kind of an administrative thing that allows Ron to put on file that you are intending to reimburse yourself for costs that you had in your CIP. And it just safeguards you as far as avoiding situations like, like the one that, that, you know, the Baltic has a couple of different things to it. But if you had a situation where the cost was more than 60 days prior, that, that kind of, you know, you're kind of out of luck on using tax exempt. But this gives Ron the ability to put a document on file at the city hall, you know, in your record-keeping system that says that you intend to reimburse the city for these costs that were in your CIP that you intended to borrow for. And that way, that administrative stuff is done. You don't need to, you don't need to see it because really, it's in your best interest to have tax exempt financing anyways. And if you don't have to have an agenda item to do it every time, that could save you some, maybe some minutes on the, you could save hearing me. How about that?
So, so really what it's doing is, in those instances, so again, everything's approved, everything's budgeted. It's just those instances where the timing might not work. If we buy something January 1st, we might not be able to get to the long-term borrowing till March or April. This resolution authorizes me to add it to the list of things that we're reimbursing for. And then kind of, like Dave's saying, is kind of backstop us to make sure it's all eligible for long-term tax exempt finance.
Yeah. And so in the resolution that we, you just passed 10 to nothing, you know, in cases, the one you saw here, Ron has the big laundry list. In other cases, you know, like the Village de Forest Finance Director, he actually, when they approve projects as they're going, he actually does the, the declaration of intent and puts one on file each time that project is done. So that's kind of, now there's two ways to do it.
Yeah. And for transparency, we always like to be transparent here. In the event that we would have to do this, I'd file it, bring it to the next finance budget personnel as a, as a discussion or informational item, just so you can see it.
Or you could just do it as part of the budget process as well.
So any additional questions? Or look for a motion?
All right. Is there a motion to approve Resolution Number 2020-30? A motion by Mr. Butke, a second by Mr. Fisher. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, please vote. That motion carries 10 to 0. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. And thank you, Dave.
The only question, Ron, Ron, the only question I have for the council is whether they want to go down the road of the parameters. I guess we didn't really ask what they wanted to do with that.
Okay. So, so that's a, would that need a formal motion or just a kind of a general sense of?
Well, I think direction for staff would be good.
Okay.
It doesn't have to be formal, but.
So to revisit, on 28th, we set the sale for the bonds either way. I guess I'd look for the okay to bring it as a parameter sale, which again, kind of gives some flexibility to when the seller sells the bonds and kind of hunt for a little better interest rate. So I don't know, do you want to make a formal motion to approve or a direction is good, too?
Mr. Henler? A motion to?
Prove a parameter sale on the 28th.
Parameter sale. Is there a second? Mr. Fisher is the second. Any discussion? Seeing, are you ready?
The only other thing that you'd want to consider is who you'd like to sign off on the, the results that day. So I'd need probably two, two names and be somebody or somebody so that either one could do it.
Sorry, I think our video is overriding your, your request to speak, Peter.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor?
No, sir. Please, Mr. Henler.
I've got my mic on. I'd like to suggest that Steve and Ron be the two signatures.
To add that to the motion, is there a moment? Prove a parameter sale with Ron and Steve being the signatures. There's a motion by Mr. Henler, a second by Mr. Fisher. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, please vote. That motion carries 10 to 0. Thank you.
Thank you all for being patient.
All right. Item O, First Reading of Ordinance Number 1437, Amending Municipal Code to Update the Housing Rehabilitation Committee Duties Presented by Josh Miller, Development Services Director.
Thank you, Mayor. I think the council's aware, we've been working with, kind of reappointed the Housing Rehabilitation Committee last year. Just recently, we adopted the rules for which they would review projects and things like that. Basically, there are procedures and program guidelines essentially. So part of that was to update how the, how the body would act. The Housing Rehabilitation Committee would, what their responsibilities for the committee would be. And so one of the things to do is to align those responsibilities with the municipal code. And so there were some things that were outdated in the municipal code and things, a lot, a lot of things have changed in the Department of Administration. And so really, we've, they've put together these procedures with the Administrator, Juneau County Housing Authority. And so basically, we're proposing a code amendment that would align the responsibilities and the, and the housing procedures with current Department of Administration procedures and with the municipal code. Just two, two minors, two major things, I guess, to point out. One thing that we're crossing off in the residency requirement is already referred to in Chapter 2-88, which requires basically all committees be a resident except for a few committees that have accepted out or unless there's expertise that the council finds is needed in that committee. But I think all the residents are currently a resident, or all the residents, all the members are currently a resident. And the other thing is, the main thing that we wanted to change is, under the current code, this committee would review all applications previously. And what, that was sort of problematic because a lot of that stuff is confidential because it's low, the moderate income folks that are applying. So there's really very limited information that they could review. Essentially, if an application meets the qualifications for the program, the Juneau County Housing Authority would basically approve it and then go through the process. So we're removing that requirement. We've, we've made some changes to the responsibilities just to match the housing program. So the Housing Rehabilitation Committee reviewed these changes on June 19th and did approve them. So now we're proposing these changes to the council. But this is the first reading, but I'd be happy to address any questions.
Any questions for Josh?
Thank you.
Does it look like it? All right. Thank you, Josh. Item P, Request to Approve the Recommended 2021-2025 Capital Improvement Program CIP Presented by Steve Barks, City Administrator.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to go back to the code enforcement item. I forgot to mention that Josh has put together or is kind of, kind of put the finishing touches on a document that may be able to be sent out later that has names and responsibilities of some of the people involved in code enforcement. We can get that out to the council and that might be very helpful as, as you deal with some of the constituent issues that come up. So look for that in the next couple of weeks or whenever that can be finalized. Going to the CIP, I've sort of been the face of presenting the CIP issues the last couple of meetings. Dan Keneck has been unavailable for those meetings, but I again want to commend him on his.
him on his, his great work on his second year of heading up the CIP process and all the department heads have worked on it. And, uh, Cole and Amy, who do some of the work here and putting it together. Where we're at right now is on June twenty-third, the council did vote five to four in support of what was called scenario two at the time, if you recall. And that was the idea that we had six point one million dollars at one point in the borrowing for twenty twenty-one. And, uh, the council looked at that and said that was too high, we need to get that down. At one point, Councilmember Wagner made a, a, a pitch for dropping that by ten percent, roughly six hundred thousand. And then as we went further into discussions, uh, you know, it came out that, uh, the, um, borrowing for the pool is actually happening in twenty twenty. So that three million dollars, roughly half of the total was already accounted for in a previous year, wouldn't have to be part of the twenty twenty-one borrowing at all. So there was discussion about whether the goal was to cut three hundred thousand or six hundred thousand. And as I said, ultimately, the, the council voted five to four after a lot of discussion in favor of scenario two, which was a cutoff slightly over three hundred thousand dollars. At that time though, the council also asked staff to look into other possible cuts. And one of the focuses that council members referenced was vehicle and equipment replacement, trying to get a handle on how we do that and if savings were possible there, especially in twenty twenty-one. Since that time, I have met with, uh, department heads, talked with them, uh, in settings from Zoom to telephone conversations. And, uh, you see on your memo, there's three reductions that are being proposed for twenty twenty-one. Uh, they involve first the fire car number seven, uh, and then the, one of the investigators' car for PD. And finally, the EBS business software looking at shifting some of those monies back out a little bit farther. We hope to do more work in twenty twenty-one, but we'll slide that back a little bit into following years. Uh, this reduces the, the total borrowing for twenty twenty-one by a hundred and nine thousand dollars. So following down on my memo, if you go back to where we were, starting point was six point one million, take out the aquatic center at three million, that left us with three point one million dollars. Just a reference, this was the starting position that, uh, staff had put together based upon our original borrowing target. And this ties back to the five-year financial plan that we worked with others on and trying to make sure that every year we pay more down in principle than we borrow, uh, in new long-term debt. But the big kicker on this was, of course, when East Seventeenth Street over by the fairgrounds was thrown into the mix at nearly one point one million dollars, the desire to move that from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-one, that, that was something staff had not counted upon. So if you add that back in, borrowing was at that point at four million, one hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. One of the, uh, opportunities that, that Dan had flagged was, uh, Lincoln Water Main Project. And, uh, that, that was planned for twenty twenty-one. We don't believe that's going to be, meaning to be happening next year. And, uh, that was going to be financed through fund balance from capital projects. So those monies are able to be allocated to offset the, uh, East Seventeenth Street project. Uh, and, uh, that brings that down to three point eight, six, five million dollars, the, uh, the amount of borrowing expected for twenty twenty-one. So you take off a hundred and nine thousand, I'm suggesting be deleted or pulled back on tonight, that gets us down to three point seven five, six million dollars, which I'm proposing would be our borrowing for calendar year twenty twenty-one. If the council wishes to go further, uh, down than that, I would success, or I would suggest that the, uh, area of reduction be asphalt resurfacing, that that amount would then subsequently be added to a future year. Again, our goal is to try and do roughly two million dollars a year in asphalt resurfacing to try and keep up on road needs. And, uh, so we try not to fall very far from that. And we would recommend trying to come as close to ten million over the five-year period as possible. So as a result, uh, I'm not fond of that, but that would be the, the suggested place if anything needed to be pulled, I guess. Looking at the proposed changes overall that, that came out of, uh, the discussions I've had with, uh, some, uh, some staff, I, I focused a lot on the conversations with, um, public safety for some of the reasons that had been noted at one point. And, uh, Chief Gramsa and, uh, Chief Owen were very good to work with, also included, um, Randy Gershman, the Chair of the Fire and Police Commission. And, uh, so some squad car and investigator car adjustments have been made, along with car seven, the lawn tractor and the UTV and trailer for the fire department. Uh, you see those in your list, I won't go through them individually. I mentioned earlier the EBS software that we're doing, um, and, uh, we're going to move thirty thousand out one year. That's funded with tax levy, not borrowing, but, uh, the goal there is to try and still be able to fund all the software improvements that we're working on to try and upgrade our system. Then you see a couple of other items as well. Vehicles and equipment, I mentioned I had a good conversation with, uh, the two public safety chiefs and the, uh, Chair of Finance, I'm sorry, of Fire and Police Commission. And they are looking at some of these needs going forward. They are well apprised of the, the, uh, the issues that the council is, uh, concerned about, and that is being able to demonstrate in future years whether or not, um, a vehicle or a piece of equipment needs to be replaced or whether it has some useful life left in it. But, uh, I know that the focus is on twenty twenty-one, and I want to thank both Rick and Scott for their willingness to work with us on those items. With respect to the Internal Service Fund, where most of our vehicle and equipment purchases are made of, are made from, uh, talked with, uh, Dan also talked with Chris Holly, who's here tonight, uh, the Street Superintendent. And he's the one who, uh, puts together, as past three, Street Superintendent staff, the projected or proposed use of Internal Service Fund monies each year in the budget process. Last couple of years, we've been going with six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, the fund, as I think was mentioned earlier, is, is healthy, but of course, we never quite know from year to year how that's all going to play out, depending upon financial circumstances. Uh, but you've got in your packet tonight, some stuff that Chris put together and did an outstanding job showing the proposed items in, uh, streets and parks. And I think one other piece of equipment, um, that is being proposed for replacement in the twenty twenty-one budget, you'll be seeing that as we begin to fall. But in each case, Chris went through and, and outlined, uh, the, um, history of the vehicle or equipment, the mileage and those kinds of things. And I made the case for why those items are considered at a point where they need to be replaced. At this point, I would, I would just say that, um, you know, I'm not saying there isn't more that can be done if council sees fit, but I would strongly recommend on behalf of staff that this, uh, proposal be accepted and the CIP be amended to include the changes noted. I believe that we've done good work and I believe that, uh, we really have come to a point where this is, uh, perhaps the final and best product the staff has to offer, subject to any further council review.
Thank you, is there a motion to approve the revised twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-five capital improvement program? Motion by Mr. Henler, second by Mr. Bargender. Discussion, please, Mr. Whittle.
Thank you. I'm not necessarily comfortable with the EBS software being pushed back. Um, I guess I'm questioning what that, what effect that's going to have. I don't know if Ian can touch on that.
Uh, uh, go, go ahead, Ian, it's fine.
I guess I'm not too concerned at this time. The reason is we have, uh, cut off the magnet support for the old software earlier than planned, and therefore we are having some saving from that, you know, the prior EBS carry for funds.
Is it going to slow down the implementation of the software package?
No.
Okay. And then I guess I'm also wondering what this ED Fund two oh five add funds for sports, tourism, strategic plan, is that money that was added this year?
Yeah, this was an item that was being discussed earlier in the year to be brought forth as a budget resolution from the EDB, but I guess I'd like, maybe if Josh, if you could just touch on, uh, on the project itself and what's involved.
So this project did come forward to finance budget and personnel as a potential budget, budget resolution, and then COVID hit. And, uh, well, the request for, was from Visit Marshfield to be part of a package to fund a sports tourism strategic plan. I believe it was in the neighborhood of fifty thousand dollars, if I'm not mistaken. Uh, the EDB, um, was supportive of contributing ten thousand dollars towards that project. So we had started down the, the road to get a budget resolution, um, and then basically the, the request was to let's hold off. And so instead of doing the budget resolution in twenty twenty, they would, they'd ask it just to be included in the twenty twenty-one budget. So they won't be doing the project this year, they'd be pushing it back to next year. Would rather have it part of the budget as opposed to doing a budget resolution.
Nothing further?
Any further questions? Mr. Butke?
Yeah, uh, maybe this is the question for Ron, uh, the, uh, equipment fund. Do we, do we, let's, let's say we're going to replace a grater. Does the whole amount come from the rental of the use of the grater? Or do we take funds from other areas? Unless you know, Steve?
Kind of looks sidelong at Chris, he can help me out here if I, uh, but in general, the way it works, the Internal Service Fund is as, as equipment is used and as vehicles put on miles, uh, the funds accumulate in the seven oh one, the Internal Service Fund. And then when an item is purchased, the entire expense comes out of this seven oh one. Uh, and hopefully it's, it's, it actually worked really well as far as I'm concerned. Um, but yes, it does all come out of the seven oh one.
No, I understand that, but again, if we're looking at replacing a grater, the funds generated for, that we charge rent to ourselves is going to fund that new grater? Or do we take it from the whole fund in general?
Oh, so it, it's all, it's, it's at the fund level. So we're not replacing, if that's the question, we're not replacing greater charge outs with greater replacement. The, there's a, there's a rental rate for, there's a really long rental rate that the state puts out and we use. So each equipment has a per hour, a per mile. So in total, that goes into the fund and purchases come out. But no, we're not tracking a, a backhoe use, charge out, then buying a new backhoe. It's not that, uh, granular.
I, I guess what, when I was looking at that, um, I guess I would ask, why not? Why don't we charge each individual piece of equipment, the rent and whatever you gotta, uh, set that rental amount? So when it's timed ten, twenty years that you have the money from that particular piece of equipment?
Right, and Chris can maybe help me out here, but I'm going to guess the answer is we don't know what we're going to need in twenty years. So it's kind of at, at the group pool level of we're using up the existing equipment and the funds are there for the replacement equipment in the future.
Yeah, Tom, we, we actually, um, charge out a piece of equipment daily. So whether we use a grater, a loader, a backhoe or, uh, our truck, uh, there's a rental rate that goes with that. That rental rate is established by the DOT basically that we've adopted. Uh, we figure out the lifespan of the, of, of the, uh, of the, of the vehicle and come up with a, uh, a rental rate for that then to basically, uh, replace it. So, so for instance, if a loader took twenty years to replace, what would be the lifespan? How many hours would we put on it to, uh, to replace that? So, um, I would say that, uh, I think one of our graders is thirty-eight years old, it's probably paid for itself, uh, several different times now. So.
Okay, thank you. I guess to follow up on that, can I answer the question though, is we can anticipate that that technology be, will be what we replace it with in the future at some point?
Thank you, Mr. Wagner.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I see one of the things that happened since the last time I looked at the, the CIP is you, you've changed some categories around you. I, I remember objecting to some things which I felt were maintenance or, or basically studies or programs that were, you wanted to pay for with, uh, a long-term debt. And I see you've placed them back in, most of them back into, uh, uh, the, the tax levy, which is fine, but I don't have any problem with that. But I do need to know, we were making these changes around, we're swapping things around, when the, the projects here, the capital projects that we're approving here, they're going, we're going to see them again in the budget, those that are funded by tax levy, I should say. Uh, we're going to see them again in the, the, the two, the twenty twenty-one budget requests, is that right?
Correct. And our intention with the changes we made back in December of twenty eighteen, uh, in addition to what you mentioned as far as, as, uh, going with a different way of, uh, determining what are capital projects, five years for life and, you know, ten thousand dollars or more, uh, did involve this idea that, uh, long-term borrowing, we want, when the council approves this plan, you should expect to see and hopefully be poised to approve all the items that come from long-term borrowing. Uh, tax levy, you know, we hope it's the same, we understand the budget challenges of making a tax levy and a tax rate work means that those, those conversations will take place.
Okay, now, now we're getting close to where the question I really want out of that is how much did the tax levy, the amount in tax levy for the CIP change? And what is the total amount of tax levy required for the CIP? I don't see, I, I don't have a new number in front of me.
Well, I'm just going to go to the page, I, I think we're thinking of, and Dan, if I'm missing, or missing the point of this question, feel free to jump in.
Okay. The pages on the, in the, in the workbook show the total tax levy for, uh, the total amount out of tax levy for twenty twenty-one, or three thousand, three hundred and one thousand?
Three hundred and one thousand, right, that's where I was going to go to the bottom, the tax levy policy.
Is that still, is that number still accurate?
Uh, yes, it is. As best I can tell, looking at the items, um, that is still accurate, although I shouldn't say that. The lawn tractor is showing us a, a, a tax levy item for twenty twenty-one, and that's being moved out, uh, away. So that would reduce it to two hundred and eighty-four thousand. But otherwise, the other items still look to be accurate.
I see the, oh, okay, then the assessor, the assessor evaluation is now in tax levy, which is fine. Um, and I see some of the, uh, the, uh, EDB projects are being funded out of the Economic Development Fund or the two oh five fund as opposed to tax levy now too, is that correct?
That's correct.
Yep, and Josh was shaking his head, so I assumed it was. Okay, um, okay, I thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, anything further from the council? Seeing nothing further, please vote. That motion carries ten to zero. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Uh, item Q, discuss plans for reviewing the twenty twenty-one budget request from outside of city government, presented by Steve Barks, City Administrator.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, the same month that we adopted the new approach for the capital improvement plan in December of twenty eighteen, the council also adopted a new approach to, uh, the way we handle requests from non-governmental organizations, as we call them, or budget funds. Uh, we had normally had them in the regular budget commingled with everything else, and it was agreed by, uh, amending a policy, or maybe was adopting a new policy actually, to separate those out, have them on a, on a unique, independent list and have the council go through them, get written requests from each of the agencies, have a special meeting, which we did on August twenty-ninth of twenty nineteen, and then ultimately consider them at the time that we consider the rest of the budget items. The, the idea with this is to sort of treat them the same way we treat, uh, parks, streets, police and other requests, and have them competing on that same level where they're being evaluated, um, separately in a similar way, brought into the overall mix for approval or rejection. Ultimately, after that meeting, I think we had, uh, maybe nine requests, and one of them was the, uh, Central Wisconsin State Fair, which we acknowledged, uh, we had a contractual obligation for one more year. We wanted to kind of bring them into the discussion because there's a day coming when they didn't have a contractual obligation with us, but it was agreed that we had to fund that request. But that still left eight others totaling over a hundred thousand dollars. Ultimately, the council in October of last year approved all of them with no reductions. And what I want to do is kind of debrief on that a little bit and say, do you like that? Do you want to do the same thing this year? I don't want to have, um, applicants going through hoops and, and having special meetings and you having special meetings if, if they're likely to, um, not see reductions. And of course, you probably don't know until you get into it whether or not you feel like something needs to be cut. But, uh, honestly, they're all good organizations. If you think about who makes those requests, Civic Band, School Patrol, Upper Mansion, Drug Prevention, they're all things that really benefit our community in meaningful ways. But they also need to be thought of as competing with, like I said, with all the other projects and activities that our departments are putting forth, especially in tough budget times. So my point for tonight is to get council direction on how you want to deal with this. Do you want to continue the same policy and approach that we did in twenty nineteen? And in which case, I'll schedule a special meeting and, and get the written request from all these groups. Or do you want to look at some, something else that you would feel, um, more comfortable with?
Thank you, Mr. Presil.
Thank you. I felt that the written information provided by each of these organizations was totally adequate for me to make a decision, and I felt that the special meeting was just them repeating what they presented, presented in written form and really didn't add anything to my decision-making on that.
Thank you, Mr. Butke.
Yeah, I'm going along the same line as Mr. Presil, uh, but I would like to freeze the ones that, uh, we funded last year and at the same amount. Like you said, Steve, they're good organizations, but there's a lot of good organizations out there. So I, I think to be responsible, it would be a good move just to fund the ones that we approved last year. And then they don't have to present it. That's a mo, that could be a motion, I guess.
Is that a motion?
Well, if she gets the motion thing up there, I'll do it. Otherwise, she'll yell at me. That is the motion, Mayor.
There's a motion to?
On the same one.
That motion is by Mr. Butke and is second by Mr. Fire. Uh, discussion? Please, Mr. Wagner.
Thank you again, Mayor. Um, the one, one way I've always looked at this is there are certain things that, um, can be done better by outside sources than, than from the city. And that we need to address those things. But I always, I, I always look at them, especially when we're working with economic development, and especially the vendors to the Economic Development Board, as we see all of as we see all of these persons that have previously been called partners as vendors from whom we purchase service. And we got to determine the the service that they are providing us is at a good price and is effective. So I'd like us that when whenever this election, I don't know who's doing this election on this. Is it going to be you and and who else?
Well, I don't intend to do it at staff level, actually. I mean, we we don't go out and solicit new proposals from nonprofits. Every once in a while, we get a new one. The the drug prevention was new, I think, four years ago when it was first introduced. Otherwise, we tend to see repeat requests from the same entities. And I I normally just bring them forward as part of the budget. But like I said, in December 2018, we decided to kind of separate them off in their own category and have them evaluated independently by this group. And, you know, I I'll do whatever the body wants me to do. I do think it's worthwhile to critique them. And I think that with.
So you're going to bring them to us to critique? You're going to bring the the whole request to us to critique, right?
Well, I yeah, I'm going to I'm going to see what this body wants. I definitely want to bring it forward. You need to know what these requests are. I guess I'm trying to find out how you want them packaged and addressed, really. My point is that there, again, I've said it a couple of times, but it's going to be a relatively challenging budget again, no surprise. And I think that everything ought to be scrutinized. You're going to scrutinize the individuals in this room rather significantly when you look at their budget requests, and I don't think anybody should be left out of that. I'm just looking for how you want to do it.
Thank you, Mr. Bargender.
Thank you, Mayor. If we go in, went ahead and did the same thing we last we did last year and approve all the all the requests, when is that, when is are those funds distributed to those organizations?
It kind of depends. Some are, once they've completed some work that they've laid out on a work plan. For example, I just got a request from one of them that indicates that we've done the things you asked us to do. Can we get reimbursement for that? One of them, I'll be honest with you, and we talked about whether or not they belong in this list, is UW. Are we technically required to provide funds for UW operating expenses? Perhaps not, but have we done it year after year? Because the the city and the county have a stake in in UW, yes. But other ones, you know, I think about Civic Band and some of those others. They make requests when they start incurring expenses. And they and they, you know, we would look at I look at the paperwork, make sure that they have incurred the expenses or that they're doing the program that they set forth they were going to do. And then I work with our finance department to release the funds.
If I may, that was my point. My point is with this COVID thing, the future is so uncertain. Will the Civic Band be operating next year? Will the Palm Sunday concert actually happen? That sort of thing. I just don't want those funds just distributed and then they don't use them appropriately. That's that's my, that's why I'm asking this.
I'm glad you brought that up. Civic Band is an example. I mean, we we aren't paying them anything because they didn't have a season.
Right.
So, you know, you're making a good point. We need to have accountability and verification that funds have actually been expended. And, you know, we we do that along the way. I'm just saying it's not the same for every organization. It depends on how they spend money and what their their work plan is and so forth.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whittle.
Thank you, Mayor. I think it's a little premature to just blanketly say, yep, we're going to fund everything we funded last year at the same level, which is apparently the current motion. So I will be voting against that. I don't want to have us tied to an obligation that we make a promise when we don't even know what our own budget is going to look like in a couple of months. So I think it's important, and I think specifically this year, it'd be really nice to get a written statement. I agree with Mr. Presl. I don't think they need to parade in here and be with us on a special meeting and go through everything if it can be provided in writing. But I would like to see in writing any of the entities that are desiring of money. And in that explanation, I would like to hear what we had authorized for giving to them for this year, if and how those monies were used, what their potential thoughts are regarding next year in light of the COVID situation. So more than just a, hey, we got 500 bucks and we use it for for music. Okay, that's great, but this year's been unusual. But give us some more information that I'd like to see. So I will be voting against this because I really do want to be able to go through and scrutinize. You know, like you mentioned, we're going to be scrutinizing everybody that's in this room right now when it comes to budget time. Why should these entities be any different? I also don't necessarily think that the UW is a part of this. And I think we we talked pretty loud and clear about that last year going through the budget process when the UW was here begging. I think that that needs to be handled a little differently because of an obligation that we have that the county has to make sure that things are doing, you know, things are happening as they're happening. So in my opinion, UW should just be part of the budget. But any of the other these nonprofits, I think they need to be scrutinized with that information that I already mentioned.
I I agree, and I think Ron and I, we we talked about this, you know, separating out both the Central Wisconsin State Fair and the UW. You know, we have involvement in these these groups, and we've been longtime supporters. We can critique the request. I mean, let's say UW comes to us with a 10% increase. You'll certainly see me asking them questions and you asking questions as well as to why. But the fact that we continue to provide support for them is is something that's historical and I think long lasting and doesn't need to be in the mix with some of those other groups. I just want to jump in with a couple of comments. Agree with everyone who's saying a couple logistical things, like Mr. Whittle said. UW, we're just rolling right into the budget right now. When I got it in, it's entered in. So unless someone directs me different, they won't have to approve it. We can still critique it, cut it as needed. And the second thing is logistically, and this isn't unique to the donations in the budget is we're switching to a new software, as you know, January 120. And I think I've said in the past, we have 300 some individual budgets, and it's just kind of hard to get our arms around it. So we're consolidating down as many as we can this year. So for all these items, you'll actually see them in the council budget. Because you, as the approver, they'll be listed down right in your budget. Because right now, they're just one line budgets kind of all over the place. But so you'll see it listed, and then whatever you approve will will show up right under your budget. So I just wanted to point those out.
Thank you, Mr. Presl.
Thank you. I I have to agree with Mr. Whittle that I think this motion is premature, and I don't think this is the time to be voting to approve expenditures that haven't even been requested yet. So I'll be voting against it.
Thank you, Mr. Butke.
Yeah, I guess I didn't state it real well. I assumed with Steve's comment there that you do look it over to see if how they used it. And I thought we recovered with that to Mr. Whittle's comments that they do have to present a request and they have to show us what they used it for last year and so on and so forth. So I agree with you, Mr. Whittle. I assumed that that's what we were doing, and I was wrong.
Thank you, Mrs. Spurs.
Yeah, I think there was a lot of good points brought up tonight. And I think that in addressing Ken's comments, you know, with this being the year of COVID and some of these organizations having, you know, their 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 thing is, you know, an event. They're hosting an event. We don't, we don't know if those are going to go on or if they're not going to go on. And then in regards to Mr. Whittle, he, you know, he seems to want a lot of detail from these organizations, and I totally agree with that. The reason that I feel like they need to do a presentation to the council is because this is the time that allows us to have a back and forth dialogue and questions. And especially in with COVID being around, I I think that there's going to be more questions than they may present just in a written document or at least had opportunity to ask those questions or get clarifications. And God forbid, everybody knows I don't want any extra meetings. But, you know, I do like to have the open dialogue so that we're clear as to what they're asking for and that we have specific questions answered directly from them. Additionally, I think that, you know, just like, you know, you had said, Steve, they're they're competing. We're in a tight budget. So they're they're going to be competing, you know, with employees' budgets for for their for their departments. And I I just think that it's worth the time and the effort to hear the presentations and allow an open dialogue of questions. That's just my personal opinion.
Thank you, Mr. All right. Mr. Fisher, your light was on. No, all right. All right, any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, then please a vote.
Can the clerk read the motion? Motion by Butke to fund the same or the same organizations at the same amount, but they still have to present every question, show what they use the money for.
And that motion fails seven to three. Is there a different motion or a different direction? Mr. Fisher.
I don't think we necessarily need a motion, but I would think we could direct the city administrator to have all of the partners draft their letters, as Mr. Presl said, and I agree with him. And then the only thing I would maybe add is I do think it's good to have them come here. I understand I understand the the comment that Mr. Presl made about them just reading from the letter. But oftentimes, we ask questions to our staff. We put them in the hot seat. I think it's only fair and equitable that we do that, have that same consistency with these partners. So I'm not going to make a motion, but I will just express I think that could be the direction. Thank you.
Mr. Whittle.
I don't have a request to speak on, so I'll raise my hand. I think from what we're kind of talking about here, it would be good, again, present in writing, not necessarily present at the podium, but we go through these items individually. If they can be present so that it, as an item comes up, if we have questions, if maybe the description wasn't very clear, not have it as a special meeting like we did last year, but incorporate it in with the budget process, incorporating with the budget meetings. If they want the money, yeah, they're going to sacrifice a couple hours, maybe a couple nights to come for us. But they're looking for something from us. So I think it's worth their time if they come. And and again, not presenting, not reading what they've given us, but being available so that if Miss Spurs has a question about Palm Sunday and says, hey, can we hear a little bit more? I got a question about something that you had listed here in your document. They'd be available for those questions.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner.
Thank you, Mayor. I've been through a couple of these things. And one of some of these, some of these organizations that come up and ask us for money are social organizations, and they work with some some of the greater problems of our community which seem to have fallen through the cracks. I agree with Mr. Whittle. Perhaps it's nice that they can be here to answer any questions if, when the when the budget comes up. But I don't want them standing up at that podium like this is the Hunger Games if they're competing with everybody else to to live through it. That's that's demeaning at best. So I I support Mr. Whittle's proposal.
Thank you, Mrs. Spurs.
Yeah, I actually agree. I think that was a that was a good compromise that Tom had suggested. But I would probably let them know that they need to have a representative here and just in case questions come up or there might be an issue with their getting money.
Yeah, the core of my question, and and maybe I'm getting a sense that it's mixed and maybe we need to settle that yet, is whether or not you want a special meeting. I get the sense that some might and others think maybe we can do something else. But the other part of it that maybe could be addressed is when I get these requests, I'm going to get written requests from these folks. And if I get them out to you earlier in advance, I can maybe get some feedback from you. And from that, I can compile, and I can get back to the head of that organization and say, here's four questions that you need to be prepared to address whenever it is. You know, whether it's the the regular budget process or whether it's whatever you want so that they can plan to be addressing these issues of funding and what services are provided and how they dealt with COVID-19 and and, you know, how their mission aligns with the city of Marshfield in in a meaningful way. They can have a little advanced notice instead of what could end up being kind of a dog and pony. I'm not saying it was, but were you kind of asking them questions on the fly? You'd be able to get some things to them in advance. But I'm willing to do whatever you want to. I guess I don't want to walk away from the podium, though, without knowing whether this body really would prefer to have a separate meeting or whether just fold it in with the the regular budget process at some level.
Discussion from the council, will that? Just incorporate it into the budget process?
Okay.
Is that fair enough? Is that clear enough, Steve?
Fair enough. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Item R, request to approve the appointment of Lyle Lang, 800 South Marano Avenue to the Economic Development Board to fill a vacant position for a term ending in 2023, presented by Bob McManus, and I'll look for an approval of his appointment. He's a local businessman, and he's a resident of Marshfield. I think he'll be a great, great appointment to that committee. Motion by Mr. Pessl, second by Mr. Rosendich. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, please vote. And thank you very much, nine to one. And item S, request to approve the appointment of Danielle Nystrom, 409 West Knights, or Seventh Street, to fill a vacant position to the Committee on Aging, her term ending in 2022. There is no need for this will be on for the next meeting, no reason for a approval tonight. I'll take any questions if you have those on her. There is an email in there from her as well for your consideration. All right, seeing no questions, we'll go down to item X. Any suggested items for future agendas? Please, Mr. Bargender.
Thank you. I would like to see on a future agenda the possibility of repurposing Marshall Police Department trucks and SUVs into other city departments when feasible.
Got that, Steve? Who was the other hand? I saw another one over there. Mr. Presl.
Thank you. I'd like an update next meeting on the COVID situation here in Marshfield. We haven't had one for a couple of meetings now. It's hard to glean what's actually going on. There are a lot of rumors out there. If we could put something together to tell us where we're at and maybe what any suggestions for what we should be doing?
All right. Any further? Further items? All right, seeing none, then is there a motion to adjourn? A motion by Mr. Butke, a second by Mr. Rosendich. And there we are. Thank you all very much. We are adjourned.